I'd like to call the order of the workshop for the month of October for the Marion City Council, City of Tawnytown, and ask Councilman Rick Hess to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We have quite a full agenda tonight. I hope we get out of here before midnight. I just want to make an announcement in case some of you are not aware. I've been told that there's some folks here in the group that are interested in discussing the plasma gasification plant that's located in the county nearby Tawnytown. This is not on the agenda tonight. In fact, we don't anticipate it being on the agenda because it's not an issue that we have any control over. The zoning of this property is controlled completely by the county. And the Planning and Zoning Committee that prepares the comprehensive plan for the county and the county commissioners are the proper venue to make your words heard concerning this project. The city will be writing letters to the county and to the planning and zoning, the county's planning and zoning group, expressing our concerns about this project, which are, I'm sure, similar to your concerns. But our voice and your voice are equal in this matter. We have no more or no less influence than you do. I suggest that you plan to attend a hearing on November the 5th in the County Office Building that will allow you to express your concerns about this project. And if you'd care to write a letter, you're certainly encouraged to do that, too. But again, our stake in this is the same as yours. We are citizens of the county and we will express our concerns in a written form to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the county commissioners. So you're welcome to stay for the rest of our council meeting if you'd care to. I will entertain any kind of comments at the end of the meeting. But we have a full docket, as I mentioned, and I truly expect this meeting to go past 10 o'clock tonight. So just be prepared for that if you want to stay. Our first item of business is the presentation of the fiscal year 2014 financial statements. In other words, our budget, our audit for this year. Welcome back, folks.
Does it feel like I was just here?
Yes.
She does.
Good evening. Tonight we're going to be presenting the results of the fiscal year 2014 audit. The report is in draft form. They're looking for your approval. We're for us to get the final print to the state by the end of this month. I know each of you were provided an updated copy of the draft report. The owner's lab had two pages missing because they were still being prepared. And so the report is in progress as ever in the work we discuss tonight. We were engaged for one coming up the state in audit for fiscal year 2014. I would like to remind everyone of our individual responsibilities as it pertains to an audit. The financial statements are the responsibility of management. Our responsibility as auditors is to express an opinion on those financial statements and to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance that there is no material misstatement of the financial statements. The audit was performed according to generally accepted auditing standards and value of audit standards. The city will receive an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which is also referred to as the clean audit report. I would like to pause for a moment because in your draft report, you're going to see something titled Management's Discussion and Analysis, also referred to as MDA. That is prepared by your management team. It has a lot of really good useful information and I would encourage each of you to read it. Our responsibility as auditors is to read it and then serve with your stuff inconsistent within the MDA from our audit calls. As you recall, you're required to issue two sets of financial statements, one referred to as government-wide and the second term fund level. And then we've referenced the page numbers for you so that after a meeting, you want to go back home and look specifically. Those are the designated pages. There's two highlights. Now, I'll pause for a minute, too. This is a little different because we have very high-level stuff. There's a lot of numbers. It's a forty-page document. I'm sure if you can glance through it, it's overwhelming. We've tried to drill down to what we think is most important for you, but again, everything, everything is important. Here's what we think are the financial highlights. At the end of fiscal year 2013, the city had total assets of just over thirty-five million. And that's at the government-wide level. And that's very comparable to where we're at the end of fiscal year 2013. I'm not sure what happened to that slide. It's just that we didn't have it because something happened there. The bigger chunk should say business-type activities. And let's see. Here, technology. I apologize. The business-type activities was sixty-six percent of the total. And it was twenty-three point two million. And revenue activities were eleven point nine million, and that was the remaining thirty-four percent. I hope that's the only slide that had a sample.
That's sixty-six percent.
Sixty-six percent.
Business-type at thirty-four percent, revenue activities. This next slide is important because often when I say things that, okay, the city had thirty-five million dollars of total assets, you're saying, tell me more. This slide illustrates how much cash and cash equivalents the city had, any receivables, and the capital assets.
We're on television and he's got a note. I don't think...
Oh, okay.
Not speaking.
I'm sorry. I was thinking, I'm talking about now.
Somebody told you that, right?
All right. Is that better?
Better.
Okay. On this next slide, our total governmental activities, as I mentioned, our total assets were eleven point nine million. And you'll see that we had almost five point seven in cash and cash equivalents. Our receivable balances were just about a hundred and fourteen thousand. And our remaining assets were capital assets at six point one million. For the business-type activities, which is your utility fund, you have two point four million of cash and cash equivalents, five hundred and eighty-two thousand of receivables, and your capital assets are just over twenty million, for a total of twenty-three point two. So this slide worked. The total liabilities for the city are at just under seventeen million. That was a three percent decrease from last year. And our business-type activities had fourteen point five million of the liabilities. And the governmental activities had just over two point three million. Here's a breakdown of what those liabilities are. You'll see that accounts payable and accrued expenses were about four hundred and twenty-six thousand for governmental activities. Developer deposits were just over seventy-one thousand. And we had debt of one point eight million for a total of two point three. Our business-type activities had accounts payable and accrued expenses of just over four hundred and six thousand and had debt of almost thirteen point four million. The difference between the assets and the liabilities is the term called net position. And again, we have another crazy slide. Our net position for our business-type activities was about fourteen point six million. Our governmental activities is two point three. And the percentages are eighty-six percent for the business-type activities and fourteen for the governmental. We're required to break down the net position into various buckets. And you'll see that the governmental activities have net investment and capital assets of over four point two million and the remaining balance of five point three as unrestricted. For the business-type activities, we had net investment and capital assets of over six million, a small amount restricted of twenty-five thousand, and our unrestricted balance was just under two point six million. And at the bottom of each slide, again, you'll see a reference to the applicable audit, the page within the audit document itself. Now we're on page ten. The statement of activities is the second required statement from a government-wide perspective. And in this slide, we're talking about the governmental activities. You'll see that the first column shows that the total expenses were just over three point seven million. And then across the top, we've outlined where our program revenues are coming from. We had charges for services of about a hundred and ninety thousand, operating grants and contributions of over two hundred and eighty-six thousand, and capital grants and contributions of about thirty-eight thousand. Our general revenues, which is real estate, taxes, income taxes, county tax equity, was just over three million. For the business-type activities, you'll see that we had just under two point five million of expenses. Our charges for services were over two point six million. We had capital grants in the current year of a hundred and eighty-four thousand, and our general revenues were a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Your change in net position for fiscal year 2014 government-wide was an increase of a hundred and forty thousand. And then broken down by specific activities, you'll see that governmental activities had a decrease in net position of a hundred and ninety-six thousand. And our business-type activities had an increase of three hundred and thirty-six thousand. Any questions before I go to the fund-level presentation? Again, a lot of numbers, but hopefully it's referenced nice that you can look at it subsequently. Beginning on page eleven of the audit report is where we shift our focus to fund-level financial statements. And again, I'm sure you recall, there's a number of differences for reporting purposes between our fund level and our government-wide statements. So we're going to hit upon them in a few slides. From a fund-level perspective, our total assets were about five point eight million. Our liabilities were significantly less at two hundred and fifty-eight thousand. The difference between our assets and liabilities from a fund level is something termed fund balance versus net position. And our total fund balance was five point five million at the end of fiscal year 2014 for the general fund. The general fund had total revenues of just under three point six million, had total expenses of just over three point six million, and there was actually a deficiency of revenues over expenses by about sixty-one thousand. Now, on this next slide, you'll see these adjustments. And this is required that we show how we go from a fund-level presentation to the net position. And so there's a number of reconciling items. Our debt service expenditures are our principal payments on our long-term debt. We have depreciation expense related to governmental activities of four hundred and sixty-two thousand. We had capital outlay expenditures in the current year of just over three hundred and eight thousand. And then we're accounting for some of the variances between the accrued expenses. So the change in net position, the very last line of a decrease of one hundred and ninety-six thousand, agrees to the government-wide presentation on page ten. This slide does the same thing. From a fund balance perspective to net position, we're showing you all the things that make up the difference. So when we were talking about the fund level balances for the general fund, we were at five point five million on page eleven of the audit report. And then we're adjusting for our capital assets, which were over six point one million. And then we have a number of long-term liabilities that are not reflected on a fund-level statement but are required to be reflected government-wide. To get to the net position of nine point five million, that's on page nine. This slide compares general fund revenues current year to the prior year, just so you can see a snapshot. You'll see that our property taxes went up slightly. At the end of fiscal year 2014, we were at two point one three eight million. And at the end of fiscal year 2013, we were just about two point one. So a slight increase there. Our income taxes had an increase as well. License and permits stayed roughly the same. We did see a spike in our intergovernmental revenues. And again, that was kind of across the board. We had an increase in income taxes, increase in tax equity, an increase from state highway for a one-time grant. So it was a combination of a number of things. Service charges remain somewhat comparable, and same with our other and miscellaneous. The next slide gives you a snapshot of how the general fund expenditures looked by the various categories. You'll see that there was an increase in general government activities over the prior year. We also saw an increase in public safety, public works, parks and rec, slight decrease in economic development, and we also saw an increase in our debt service. This gives you a snapshot of the utility fund. You'll see that the utility fund had operating revenues of two point six million compared to under two point three last year. And that was about a fifteen percent increase. You'll see that the operating expenses had a decrease of about sixteen percent. And you're going to see the word restated in the 2013 column. There was an error in the depreciation expense in last year. So we've adjusted it for purposes of the slides so that you could actually look at the effect. So our expenses, there was a sixteen percent decrease. The current year, we had operating income of just over four hundred and ninety-four thousand, whereas last year, we had a loss of two hundred and sixty. The last financial slide takes a look at your required supplemental information. For the general fund, you're required to show your original budget, your final budget compared to your actual, and then have the variance column. So you'll see that the revenues were originally budgeted at over three point three million. After budget amendments, it's three point five. Our actual came in over, well, nearly three point six million, and we had a positive variance of sixty-seven thousand. Expenditures, we had planned three point four million. Our final budget was three point six. Our actual expenses were slightly more than the three point six, and there's the negative variance of sixty-four thousand. When the budget was originally adopted, it was expected that you would be using fund balance to balance the budget of sixty-four thousand, and the actual results ended up, you didn't need quite as much. You used sixty-one thousand instead of sixty-four. I'll pause for a moment. I mentioned to you that we did the audit in accordance with government auditing standards. And as a requirement, we need to look at your internal controls over financial reporting and compliance. We're required to communicate to you in writing if we find anything that is deemed to be a material weakness in internal control. And I've provided you the definition by professional standards as to what a material weakness is. And the key words are deficiency in internal control, such that there's a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement will not be prevented, detected, and corrected. And there were no material weaknesses identified in the current year. The second requirement is for us to communicate if there's anything that we deem to be a significant deficiency. And this is something that is less severe than a material weakness, but yet important enough that we need to share it with you. And there were two items that were noted in the current year's audit. And if you wouldn't mind, in the revised draft that you got tonight, it would be, we're going to start on page forty-one. Under condition, the city's internal control procedures state that a department manager is to initial invoices prior to payment. In our testing of cash dispersments, we found two invoices where there was no evidence of a departmental approval. However, finance and executive approval was documented and the checks were signed. So we're telling you that because we think that's important for you to know. The city does have internal control procedures in place regarding the authorization of transactions by appropriate personnel, but the procedures were not being consistently followed. The internal control procedures were designed to ensure that payments were not made without proper authorization. Any deviation from the established internal control procedures increases the risk of unauthorized or improper payments. The internal control procedures were not followed. We just recommend that the city personnel follow the established internal control procedures to reduce the risk of unauthorized or improper payments. Our sample size was twenty-five, so we found two of twenty-five. And again, for that reason is why we're sharing it with you. If we would have found one, we probably would have done additional testing to see whether or not it was isolated. But in this case, once we found two, we had to at least bring it to your attention. The second finding, fourteen dash oh-two. In October of 2013, the city entered into a non-cancelable lease agreement for office equipment. And that lease requires monthly payments of nine hundred and thirty-four dollars for sixty-three months. And the total commitment under this lease arrangement is about fifty-nine thousand dollars. The lease agreement was not signed by the mayor in accordance with the city's ordinance on purchases and contracts. And we cited here what the new ordinance said. The new ordinance that was recently adopted states that all written contracts for amounts of twenty-five thousand dollars or more shall be signed by the mayor and attested by the city clerk. We believe the cause of this is that the ordinance did not specifically address lease arrangements. Therefore, management did not perceive this to be an item requiring the following ordinance. The ordinance established levels of authority to ensure that purchases and contracts were approved by appropriate individuals before committing the city's financial resources. This lease arrangement is non-cancelable, and therefore, the city has committed funds for the next several years. We recommend that you clarify the levels of authority for all financial commitments and ensure proper approval is obtained. So there was some discussion as to whether or not a lease arrangement fell within the guidelines of the ordinance. To me, it would seem that it would. But it specifically didn't say leases, but it is a long-term commitment. And for that reason, I would think that it would fall within the parameters of the ordinance.
I talked with Jay today about this, and he said that we will, when he gets back on Tuesday, we'll talk about it further.
In accordance with government auditing standards, we're also required to let you know whether or not we found any issues of non-compliance and that we did not identify any that are required to be communicated. The last item on my agenda is the SAS 114 required communications. And that is the three-page letter that's addressed to mayor and council with the big draft across the middle. These are, I say boilerplate, they're the same things we're required to communicate to you every year just to let you know if there were any specific issues or concerns. Under the significant audit findings, the very first paragraph talks about management is responsible for selecting appropriate accounting policies. And the significant accounting policies of the city are disclosed in note one of the financial statements. There were no new accounting policies adopted in fiscal year 2014. We noted no transactions that were entered into by the governmental unit that lacked authoritative guidance. All significant transactions have been recorded in the proper period. The next section highlights accounting estimates that are used in preparing the financial statements. And the two more significant ones are the estimated useful lives of assets and whether or not an allowance is needed for uncollectible receivables. At the top of page two, we've highlighted a few footnotes that we think are important for you to be aware of. At the very top of the letter, as disclosed in note two, the city's cash deposits were fully collateralized as required by state law. As disclosed in note three, the city's assessable base was over five hundred and thirty-five million, and the tax rate remained at point three seven. In note four, we've outlined your capital asset activity. And then in note five, we've outlined your debt obligations and the portion for which is due within the next twelve months. For our governmental activities, our outstanding debt was over one point eight million, of which eighty-three thousand will be due in the next twelve months. For our business-type activities, our total debt was fourteen point one million, and seven hundred and seventy-three thousand will be due in the next twelve months. The city contributed over two hundred and seventeen thousand to the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System for the employees in fiscal year 2014. And then the last item, again, just brings to your attention what I mentioned earlier, that there was a prior period adjustment made for an error in depreciation expense in 2013. And that's bringing that to your attention. Under difficulties encountered in performing the audit, we encountered no difficulties. The audit went extremely well. We were here in early June doing preliminary work, and then we returned right after Labor Day for final field work. The staff were fully prepared and responsive to all of our questions, and it was a very good audit. Under corrected and uncorrected misstatements, we've highlighted a few of the more significant audit adjustments that were made. We had no disagreements with management. We will be asking management to sign the client representation letter at the end of this, at once this has been approved. We're not aware of anyone consulting with other CPAs to get a difference of opinion on any financial matter. And then the last item indicates that we may talk about a number of things throughout the course of our engagement, but nothing was a condition of our retention. It just means we have an open dialogue. And then the last paragraph just reminds you that this three-page letter is for your internal use. It is a lot of information, and I hope you had a chance to look...
There's a lot of stuff.
You have a lot of stuff going on.
Any questions? Are we around time this year, right?
I know. All's looking good.
Very good.
Thank you, Bobby Joe.
Bobby Joe, are we going to discuss the... Boy, am I lost here, you know? Just went spring day here. The adjustments, and your adjustments. You got the sheet that has all the changes to the different fund bits.
Oh, the budget amendment.
There you go.
There we go. Okay.
I knew it was in there somewhere. Thank you. And the reason, you know, what we're going to be doing is on Tuesday now, remember, you're going to be approving this piece here for the audit, and then we can file it. And we're also going to be, you're going to be making the budget amendments, which are in there to balance, totally balance the budget. which are in there to balance, totally balance the budget.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
I guess you don't wanna hear about that?
Thank you, Michelle. Appreciate that.
Mayor, you wanna hear about the adjustments?
Yes, let's hear about the adjustments to the budget.
So the adjustment should be, it originally was right in front of your financial audit, in your package. Right, probably right after the statement of revenues and expenditures, and then right before the financial audit. And it's a one-page document.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So we did a high-level year-end budget, uh, year-end budget amendment this year. I think normally, you're probably used to mid-year budget amendments. We decided not to do that this year. And we decided just to do a year-end budget amendment. So at a high level, we did an increase of revenues of 161,000 and an increase of expenditures of 161,000. And the areas that we concentrated were on were the real property taxes, the local income taxes, and the intergovernmental revenues. And then for the expenditures, we concentrated on salaries being raised in the clerk's office, which we now call finance, the public safety for the police vehicles, and debt principal payments, which were not budgeted for originally. But we were responsible for paying them, so we, we budgeted them in the amendment. And so that gave us, when we increased the revenues and increased those expenditures, then that is what brought us into that deficit of about $61,000, which you guys had already budgeted for last year, that you expected to have that difference. And so the budget amendment is already reflected in the audit. Back on page thirty-eight, does it start? On page thirty-eight. We've already put the budget into the financial statements.
Basically, if you're recalling, what you're doing is, at the beginning of the year, when we do the budget, it's kinda like, bit of a swag, okay? At the end of the year, you tally up all the pluses and minuses and make everything balance again. That's probably all we're doing here.
Do you have any questions on the budget adjustments? All right. Let's move into, is there a, um...
Mayor, can we just give them maybe about two or three minutes to kind of clear out?
All right. I'll take a two or three minute-
Turn off the stops and...
Thank you very much.
I guess we're ready to continue now. I'll take care of what I leave you.
All right. All right. Next on the agenda is a, um, President has concerns about our school crossing guard. Is there a Demetria Hensley? Come to the, just please, just for your record, state your name and address.
Hey, my name is Demetria Hensley. I'm at 212 and a half Carroll Heights Road, Tawny Town. Okay. Dear Mayor and council members, thank you for allowing me to discuss this important issue for the children of our community. If you are here tonight, I don't think there is anybody here out of concern about this issue, if you can stand. I'd like to start out with my understanding of the issue at hand. There are no crossing guard at Baumgartner Road and 140, either in the AM or PM currently right now. I'm unsure as to if there's been or is a crossing guard at Trevanian Road and 140. I do understand that there are elementary and middle school-age children walking. There have been different explanations as to the absence of the crossing guard from her retiring, being out on sick leave, or being out for surgery. These explanations have been, come from the police department, the mayor's office, to community people who have spoken with the crossing guard. There have been phone calls and emails from various community people to the middle school, the Board of Education, the Board of Education Transportation Office, the police department, the city manager, and the mayor that resulted in miscommunication as to who is responsible for the welfare of our children's safety until they reach the doors of the schools involved. Parents who work are not able to supervise our children walking to school and shouldn't have to worry about their safety walking across Route 140. According to the Board of Education Transportation Department, there are 120 students that need to walk across 140 of Baumgartner Road daily. That's a high-traffic area, especially in the morning. There have been at least four children that I know of that have been, that have had a very close call of being hit by a vehicle. At least one of these instances was where a child had a walk signal and a car turned and almost hit that child. If a crossing guard had been present, that scare to that child would not, could've been avoided. The crosswalk only gives the children about 12 seconds to cross the street. That's not enough time when, at the end of the day, there's a mass exit from the middle school. My question's to you. Who is responsible for, for providing the crossing guard to protect our children? What have you done to secure a crossing guard? Has that position been advertised, and if so, where and for how long? What do you intend to do to secure a crossing guard? What do you intend to do to protect our children until a crossing guard can be secured on a daily and consistent basis? This is what we, the community, expect. A crossing guard secured for all areas where children cross at a crosswalk within two weeks. As you've known about this issue since before the school started, August twenty-second, twenty-sixth, excuse me. Clear communication between the community, school scat, school staff that's affected, the police department, the mayor's office, and the Board of Education as to the progress of the issue via emails, phone calls, or whatever means there could be. Some kind of training to children of school age that are walkers as to the proper use of the crosswalk equipment, the negative effects of jaywalking, using the buddy system, et cetera. This could be provided by the police department, possibly at the library or at the school-wide assemblies. We want to thank the mayor and the town council for your prompt attention to this matter, along with the town police department for their part in protecting our children. I'm presenting you, the mayor, with a copy of my speech to give you written communication as to the issue on this day. And I've also have, I just did a little bit of research, how to develop pedestrian safety actions. There's a lot of things out there that could help, that could be handed out to citizens. Make tracks, your youth guide that could be given to kids. Safe Walking for Your Youth is a two-page pamphlet that could be given out and talked about from the police department, whoever. Safe Routes to School Guide, which is teaching children to walk safely as they grow and develop. I understand that it's parents' jobs, you know? But not all parents are able to communicate the proper use of a crossing walk, nor are they there. And we expect our children to be safe in our community. And I don't think any one of you would ever wanna have a child hurt crossing the, that street, or any street in our community. So...
Counsel, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Hensley? Thank you. Henry, or Chief Tyler, or Sergeant Metzler, do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Well, I can, I'll answer some of her concerns here. The day we put on assembly at the school for crosswalk orientation, Sergeant Metzler and Lieutenant Castello went out and did that. We can provide and will provide on-point education to and for walkers and stuff as part of our safety and security package that we work with at the school. That's one. Second, the times that she had said to you, the state highway has now elevated them up to 20 seconds. Five-second break, 15 seconds to walk. So it's not a 10-second deal anymore. And that's at both intersections.
Thank you.
I guess there was another issue that you had that I'm kind of, you know, the, the-
The right turn.
The right turn? Okay. Right turn. Clearly, at this point in time, you know, we're working with the state highway to look at getting some else, something else there evaluated. But that's gonna have to come at, uh, at, we're working on it right now. Let's put it that way. And I'll be working with Mr. Heine on that. So that also secured. But I just wanna let you know too, okay? We've monitored this since day one. I put cars out there in video. I, I think we have a lot to be proud of in our students and our children. They act very responsible. They're very pleasant when we talk to them out there. And I give them a lot of credit for taking the steps that they take to be safe too. Now, with that being said, after Streetscape was started and finished, okay? That time was my crossing guard at that point in time where I've been actively teaching the process of crosswalk etiquette. So they got all that experience. And I tell you what, it's really paid off. Because while I was monitoring, Mr. Heine, my officers, we had, we had seen absolutely no violations that have occurred. I don't know where, and I'm sure it might be some. But I give credit to our children. I'm not gonna call them children. I'm gonna call them young students. They, they're really showing a lot of maturity across them. I sat out there, and plus I watched the video of, of the afternoon crossing. We had about eighteen or twenty kids crossing together. And they're starting to pack up. In other words, they're packing together.
Right.
And, and it's amazing to see. They walk up, one pushes the button, they wait till everybody comes up there, and grab, okay? You get a scrambling every once in a while, goes across diagonally. But I will tell you this. There's a lot of compassion in those kids. There's some kids that wouldn't even wait for other kids. And I see them wait, wait, you know, and push the button. So I, I give our, I give our young children, our young kids, young adults, soon to be high school. We gotta give them a little bit more credit. And, and what I say to the parents is this. Somebody's doing something right. Because the way they're crossing now, you know, I, I, I give somebody a lot of praise. There's gonna be situations. The biggest concern that I have is those that aren't using that crosswalk. They're crossing down at, you know, at other intersections in there. So I can, or please, get the parents to understand. That crosswalk and those lights are there for their safety. Crossing a road at a different point in time, you, you, it's kinda hard to control. So that's what parents have to come in. So that was a big part of our assembly today. Okay? So we are attuned to the children. They're our best commodity we have. So I can guarantee you one thing. This mayor and council and the police department, we will take it very lightly. But with that being said, we have a lot of responsibilities out there with all the other bus stops, all the other crossings and stuff. So after we surveyed that and state highway and that, and both the schools, we was, I, we have some responsible young children. I say young children, young adults. They're soon to be high school kids. So we're there for them. We're gonna train them, we're gonna be there for them. But the parents also need to help us enforce this. The crosswalk is the safest part to cross. We're getting across Roth Avenue, Baumgartner, at Broad Street, Franklin Street. And there is no crossings there. So that's one of our bigger concerns. So we're out in neighborhoods, constantly making sure our bus stops are safe. And the parents can be a big help to us by forcing the issue. Use that crosswalk at Baumgartner or where the lights at. Push. We have, all the crosswalks now are elevated five more seconds. You push it, you get five seconds, and then it comes up to 15. You have plenty of time to cross now.
That's my word.
Okay? So, and please don't hesitate to call me, email sometime.
Well, I didn't wanna put a lot of things in here, but you know, I called and everything and-
All right, well, here's the thing.
We said that.
Okay, it's like anything else. You can, you can talk to somebody else, but you need to talk to me. Okay? That's the bottom line. And I will talk to you anytime.
And I'm not the only parent who has this concern. It's a shame that other parents didn't come out tonight, which is very disheartening.
Well, it is, but, yes, ma'am, the big thing that I wanna remind you is, I didn't receive any calls on this.
Well, your department did, but they didn't.
Well, I understand that, okay? I didn't receive that. So I'm here for you. I'll be glad to sit down and tell you what our programs are gonna be presented at the school, okay? And if you wanna be a part of that, I welcome you.
Well, I can't, 'cause I'm a teacher full-time.
Oh, okay, gotcha. And if you never know how these sound, these are still good.
Yes.
So I'll be glad to explain that to you.
So what's, but what's the issue with the crossing guard? Are we not hiring crossing guards, or are we gonna get crossing guards back?
I will refer that to, um...
Because I did some research also. And the state highway administration says a child 10 years and younger should not be crossing streets alone. That is coming out from our National State Highway Administration. You have kids in sixth grade that are still 10.
Thank you very much for your comments and your literature that you provided. Decision will be made on Monday at a regular meeting, whether we replace the guard or not. And you're welcome to come back then and offer any other input that you might have. But we, we're not allowed to vote on things at workshops, but, but we have discussed it among ourselves and, um... We appreciate your, your side of the, of the situation. We've, we've received input from our police, from the principal, from our city manager, from our insurance carrier, from many different, many different sources. And this will help us make the decision.
So at what point will you be discussing it? And at what point will it be shared with the community?
Whether the, I mean, the, the opinion is that, based on all the sources of information that we have, that a regulated crosswalk doesn't need a crossing guard. When the crossing guard returns to work, perhaps her better assignment would be on unprotected crosswalks. So that's something that we've, we've been mulling over, decide how we'll move on that. And we'll, we'll decide that on Monday.
On Monday? It sounds like the decision's already been made. So, you know, and especially with the miscommunication as to if she's being hired, if she's retired, if the crossing guard is about on medical leave, you know? We're getting different things. Instead, the town council's saying, no, we're not hiring the crossing guard back again. Or the police department's saying that we don't need them back again. I don't understand why you can't give us a clear answer for the community. So what is it? Is she on medical leave? Is she retired? What's going on?
Our crossing guard currently is on medical leave.
Okay.
She had surgery back at the end of August where her, her, I think it was right or left leg was amputated. Whether she can return back to service or not has yet to be determined.
Right.
She may not even be able to come back to duty.
So if you have, if you, sorry, go ahead.
We will know that at, at some time in the future. Should she come back, then more than likely, as the mayor stated, she will be reassigned to a different location.
So the decision has been made then, is what I'm hearing. And I don't hear any of the other council members making any kind of, any kind of opinions about it or anything.
Monday nights when we get to the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Let's move along.
Yes, Tuesday. Tuesday. We're not here on Monday. It's a holiday.
It'll be Tuesday evening.
Next, we have the approval of the minutes for the regular meetings of September third and September eighth. Does anybody have any additions or corrections to these minutes? September third. I know, here, I think what you mean, but under new business, we have this home trainer request. What was the home trainer? On page two of September three. That's used again in later.
Under what category of?
New business.
Yeah.
Home trainer requested for BCA application.
Yeah, that was the, uh...
Yeah, that was the, the physical or the...
That's what I assumed.
Jim, or phys ed instructor.
Oh, yeah, that, that was, you remember the, the...
Yeah, I remember, but is that the term we should actually use, home trainer?
Well...
Personal trainer.
She's calling herself, I think it's personal trainer would be more appropriate.
I'll change it.
Okay, yeah, I know that's nitpicking, but it...
That's fine.
Anything else? For approval. Night.
Tuesday.
This month under resolutions, ordinances, and agreements.
Hold it.
Tuesday.
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 Tuesday night.
I'm sorry?
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night. Columbus Day. Up for, up on Tuesday for resolutions, ordinances, and agreements. We'll have some pending resolutions we'll further discuss. I think our attorney will be back with us then. I don't know if there's any progress being made on any of this or not, but the annexation, annexation resolutions for Stumptown Road one and two, and then the ordinance for the flood plan, plane management. I will be presenting resolution twenty fourteen dash fifteen, water allocation for the month of October. This is the water allocation resolution we pass each month. Anybody have any questions on that? All right, next we have the city managers report. Henry, do you have any comments, Morris, this evening?
Well, Act twelve seventeen, the only thing new I can tell you about that is that we have a meeting scheduled for next Wednesday. And unfortunately, you know, I don't know what that's about, really. Okay, so the employee manual, hey, guess what, folks? Yeah, I got a copy of it with you. So what we probably will do with that, we, you know, take it, review it for a month, come back in November. You guys, well, you actually take longer than that, I mean, well, no. We probably wanna look for passage somewhere around December, right? Approval by December, because there are things we want to activate January first, so... It only took us a couple of years, we could be two months.
I was gonna say, so why can't we have a year?
Well, might.
I just wanna know, how do you want, you know, I read it and marked it up a little bit. So how do you want each of us to...
Well, you know, that's...
And, you know, give out comments.
I like it that way, on paper, okay? Not electronically.
Okay.
Then I gotta look through twenty-two different things and try to find it.
Okay.
This way we can compare page by page.
Okay, so you want...
November workshop, we'll, we'll discuss this. Any additions or corrections we need to make to the appointment?
Well, I'd like to have, I guess what we'd like to have is comments back to us.
So you want us to physically give you pages?
Right.
Okay, should we give them to you, Henry? Just drop them off here.
There you go.
Okay.
Put your name on top of it, so we know who got it.
That'll be fine.
All right.
There's, there's some creative writing in there.
I noticed.
It was an experience, because, you know, people did not know what their benefits were. It's something else, it was hard to believe, but we hope we got it all.
Well, you know, and...
With another five eyes looking at it and some of the staff, then we'll get a better, a good shot at it.
As you all know...
You covered a good bit, and it seems like maybe you got it all.
Well, it was kind of an interesting experience, to be honest with you, because as we would go through, there were some things that we kind of made, I guess you could say assumptions, or what we thought was tribal legacy is what it really boiled down to. Is, the example that I can give you is, we thought that the police had their own, because we've always thought, we've always heard them talking in that vein. Well, we found out, nope, they used the same one we did, but there was nothing in there that addressed anything that they followed. So we had to incorporate it. There was a lot of, quote, tribal legacy that was being done in the city, but never documented. Now, I think, like you say, we probably got a good bit of it.
We hope we got it all.
Well, it would appear so.
After a year, one would...
Henry caught one, what, one day before we went, you went to print, right?
Exactly.
You got it, oh, we gotta put this in.
As I was reading, as I thought, why are you trying to finish this? It only took them two years. But I did.
Need to move on to another task.
Yeah, we've, we've made a...
Another two-year project.
We've made a few improvements in procedures too, with the timekeeping and, you know, that type of thing.
And, and that's why we, you know, we're shooting for a January first type implementation, because there are some things in there. One of the other things that was, we kind of discovered how it was done, was every employee gets one personal day a year. Well, I didn't even know that, you know? So when I went to find out how that's done, how it's done was, it was rolled into your vacation. Okay, well, that, we didn't think that was proper to do it that way.
Because you can only carry over so many vacations.
Exactly.
Because of the carryover, right. So that's gonna make a change in the timesheets, how it's recorded, it's also gonna make a change in payroll system. So you gotta stage all that stuff. But as soon as we can get some feedback on some of that area, we can move forward. Well, let's put it this way, we're gonna move forward anyway. And, you know, worst we have to do is not implement it. Okay, wastewater treatment plan, that's, that's kicked off. Basically, we had our first meeting on October the second, which was a pre-construction meeting, which involved all parties. We talked about all the, the ins and outs, how things, how things are gonna be communicating, the communication aspects of the whole project. And we're ready to go. We're gonna have, we scheduled up, we have monthly meetings, and our next one is gonna be, you know, whatever, the closest to October second, which is like a Thursday, November second, or in that area. So we're up and running about with that. Now, okay, code enforcement, impound lot. Well, as we have done here, preparing the RFP. Wait a minute, oh, we've, we've hit a few snags, so to say, with regard to that, and we're kinda working through that. And I don't know, Jim, do you have any comments? Do you'd like to make one out, or?
I'd rather we have our staff...
Okay, we have a meeting, we have a meeting scheduled with Jay as well to talk about those issues. So, the city wanted a, mayor wanted a Facebook page. We're gonna be having that under, under construction, Dan's getting that together right now. But it's gonna be, it's really very much gonna be just like we have with the Twitter. It's just gonna be pushing our stuff, just gonna be pushed, yeah, one way. We're just pushing stuff out, and we're not taking any comments that are coming in. So, the last thing is, we're, you know, we've advertised to fill Leah's position, and this number that I say two hundred and eighty is double that number, that's how many applicants we've got. What we've discovered with this is, I think we've learned something. And one of the things that we've learned is not to let people to respond to, by, by email. There are engines out there where people just post their, their resumes on a thing, and somehow, somewhere, they scan for this, and it hits keywords. Like if we're looking for administrative assistant, the key word is assistant. We've got resumes forty, fifty for medical assistants, nothing qualified it at all. So I think when we do it next time, we're gonna make them mail it in, so we don't get the, the automated response that we're getting this time. What was the last count? Four hundred?
We're up to five hundred now.
Oh, five hundred.
How far away are we getting that?
Far away. We're getting it from New Jersey, we're getting it from Texas, we're getting them from Florida. So if, we're getting it with, you know, people who have master's degrees. And so it's, it was a learning thing by putting the email thing, because that makes it totally automatic. It just fires it up and starts shooting. And you can see, there's, you know, on, it's various services are, and there's a format, and you start looking at them, you say, hey, this is, you know, it's matching the format, so it's, it's being generated somewhere else. We're also getting duplicates from different sources. So lesson learned there, a lot of reading.
You know, it's, if anybody's under any of the, any illusion that our economy is recovering, alls they have to do is look at two hundred and eighty applications for a receptionist, five hundred applications for a receptionist job in the city of Tonty Town, and you'll realize how far away we are from recovering. So remember that when you go to vote in November. That's my political statement.
I don't have anything more.
What else, Henry?
I'm sorry? Nothing else for me?
All right.
I can bring one up.
Any question, any?
Where do we, where do we stand on the Creamery Demo?
On the Creamery Demo? Well, the last instructions that I know we were talked about is Nancy was to go look for money. And I was to go out and get a scope of service to do, to do the work. Scope of service is done. Grant money? You saw that report? No grant money around. So with that, you know, the decision has to be made in which direction we're gonna go. Because it's gonna, you know, it's gonna be money out of our pocket to do the demo, or we wait till the beginning of the year, which we're not that far away from, and see what Nancy can come up with, with the grant that she's talking about. I think she covers that in here.
Did we get an estimate? Engineers estimate?
Yeah, we did. Yes, that was part of their task, was to come together with the scope of service and engineering estimate. And I don't remember what that is, sorry.
Six figures, though.
Can you remind us on Monday? What the figure is? Would you remind us on Monday?
Monday? Yes, I will.
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
We're all gonna show up on Monday.
Who's gonna show up Monday?
I won't.
Probably all of us.
Any questions for their departmental reports on departmental report?
Henry, maybe you can answer this. On Dan's report, number nine. Is that just system stuff that Dan is trying to coordinate with the leak detection because...
Yes.
Okay, because I noticed back here that it is working, and they are using it.
Right.
But is this just a systems thing that he's trying to marry or coordinate?
What he's trying to do with it right now is to marry it together with a mapping, you know, so, so that you can actually look at a map and it points right where that is. I mean, right now, right now, we, we know where it is, you know, we can do it manually, but this is more of a pictorial thing, you can get a, you know...
Okay, and I also noticed back on the accounts payable or something, a figure for this leak detection thing. Is that what we pay for maintenance? In the accounting? Are we paying them every month something?
I, no, typically, and those customer support plans are typically an annual thing. And it may be coming up, because I think we've had it almost a year now.
Okay.
Yeah, and didn't they buy more, whatever you call them, sensors?
Yes, we did buy, buy, we scheduled to buy, I think, six or eight of those a year, so that we can deploy them out even further. But the report basically says from, that even with that, we are still, you know, able to map the whole city over time. But what that means is, they gotta go to those things and move them around. You know, our ultimate goal is not to have that manpower involved, just to ride, you know, pick up the data.
Exactly. Okay.
In Nancy's report, next weekend is the Harvest Fest.
Oh, yes.
At the towns of Tonty Town, which, you know, turned out to be something that I guess they thought would be cute, and it's turned out to be something that is really gaining a lot of speed and moving on. It's pretty interesting. The other thing, the welcome to Tonty Town sign, down by Sheets, okay? Nancy's gonna try for a grant in January, which is a large number grant.
Right.
A small number grant she cannot get. What I'd like to know is, has anybody contacted Sheets?
And I can tell you the answer to this.
To see what their position is on it yet.
The answer is no, no one's made that contact. And we will go ahead.
I think the design cost, with a local designer, is something like twelve hundred bucks. Eighty hours or...
Something of that, yeah.
Eighty hours an hour.
Right.
Something over about twelve hundred at that.
Yeah.
I think we had a, somebody had to contact Sheet, Sheets, and see what, what they're planning.
If they're willing to do anything more than just donate the piece, well, they can't even actually donate the piece of land, because they don't know where they are.
Well, they're supposed to build.
I, I know that, but I'm sure that, you know, that's sort of like falling on, they might have, might stimulate them.
Did they ever come to the planning commission to change it?
To change what?
The fact that they were gonna, they had it in the plans and all.
No, what they did, if I remember at the planning and zoning, is what they said was that they were gonna reserve, you know, they were looking for, you know, what did we want? We weren't prepared with anything that we wanted. They said that they would reserve space in that area, so we have a space up there that's reserved to put whatever we decide to put in.
And I thought they said it would be part of their construction costs. I think, and that...
Well...
It's been a while back, okay?
There you go, I, you know, we'll have to go back and see.
Okay. Moving on our legal report, I guess we'll wait till Tuesday. The unfinished business, we have the memorandum of agreement with the county, this was for the rain tax. Recall, the areas municipalities have made their comments. The letter has been revised, reflecting a majority of those comments. I've looked it over myself, I don't have any particular issues with it. Think it seems fair and balanced, I haven't checked with our attorney yet, but hopefully we'll be able to move that forward on Monday. Does anybody have any comments on that?
I have a question about that. If one of the communities, one of the municipalities pulls out of this, how does it affect the other ones that are still participating?
We haven't asked.
Well, they, they have the right to pull out at any time.
Yeah.
Well, yes.
But that's been discussed, and I, Jim, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll let you field that one since you're the, the daily day-to-day dealing with this.
The financial participation is based on acres that need to be treated. So if one jurisdiction dropped out, they would, they would only be contributing their portion anyhow, so it doesn't really adversely affect the rest of the group. The likelihood of someone dropping out during the course of the MPDES permit is unlikely because of the difficulty in whether the rights amended. But if somebody chooses not to enter the agreement to begin with, then they're most likely cutting themselves off from other supports at the county as well, such as the MPDES coordinator that we all share at the county level now. So it certainly could happen, but it's, it sounds like the municipalities are on board with it, counts by.
Thank you. What you're gonna have to do on Tuesday... What you're going to have to do on Tuesday is make a decision to direct or allow the mayor to enter into the MOU, which is coming up later this month, I forgot what the date is. Because I, well, I, I got this email today and I sent it out to everybody. I didn't know if that was an invitation for everybody to come, if it was, or for just the mayor.
I think it's the 23rd, because on the bottom it says for signature 10/23/2014.
So at the end of this month, they're, they're expecting a response from all the municipalities. You're either in, or you're out.
Just noted that it's a little bit better than a penny on our tax base every year. And increases every year by 5%.
Yeah.
You know, thinking about what you just said, it would be logical that if a municipality pulled out, the 80% share that the county had set aside for that municipality could be redistributed. Distributed to the other seven municipalities.
Well, yeah, but I don't know if that.
It could be an advantage rather than a disadvantage.
I don't think that's going to happen.
I don't think that's going to happen.
You know, but something because.
It may, it may, in a roundabout way. What my, what I see happening is this comes back into the fund. The amount of money that is going to be used for the count-county agreement would be increased by that much. And then the percentage that we would, would chair would also be increased by that much. Probably would be significant when you divide it among seven towns, but.
I don't think that's, that, that's a wrong.
If it's earmarked.
I believe that assumption has some fallacy to it, or not, not solid to it. Simply because the number that we get is based on our commitment. In other words, how many acres do we have to treat in the city? If somebody decides, you know, one of the other municipalities decides not to get involved in, then they're going to have to bear the full share of the whole thing. And the county's just not going to have to put up that 80%. They're not going to, they're not going to redistribute the money. They're only, they only committed to 80% to each municipality.
Is it 80%, is it one big 80% or 80% to each?
But if, but if, if, if the pool goes up.
I understand what he's saying. If, if it's an 80% big pool, then 80% divided by four is better than divided by five.
I mean, it would be inconceivable that a, that a municipality would not participate.
It is.
If they were going to receive 80% of their project, but.
As an, as an example, we have, let's just assume we have 100 acres to treat. That's our responsibility. They're picking up 80% of that cost.
Of that cost.
Right.
Ours.
Our cost.
Has nothing to do with Union Bridge nor by us.
Nothing to do with anybody else, correct.
The formula is strictly us, it's acreage times 25,000 times.
Okay.
So if somebody bails out, that just means that they don't have to put up the 80%.
I was just worried about whether.
They're not going to redistribute the wealth.
Well, my concern was just, I was worried that it might be more of a burden on us if somebody else pulled out, but I'm glad that's not the case.
No, that's not the case.
Good, good.
Any other unfinished business?
Yes, there is. And Angelo just touched on it just a little while earlier, in, in the minutes, I think it was Angelo. Or, but anyway, it's the BZA. If you recall.
That was Paul.
Okay, as you recall, Angelo had asked for a, some sort of figure on how much, how many daycare centers are still in business after so many, you know, I don't know how many years it was, but the bottom line is, is we got that figure back. And that, that turns out to be three out of 10. So we're, you know, we're, the reason Angelo wanted to know that, because he might be changing his mind about the fee. And we, you know, so what that, the way it's set up right now, if you are a daycare center, you only have to pay $75. Okay, the city picks up the additional cost of that. So the thought at the time was, is that that would be stimulating and a desired need in the city. And we only get three. So we lost the money at a seven, however that one was.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, I think we're going to work into.
Well, we can put that on the agenda for Monday to choose. To adjust the fee back to whatever you want. And we will just touch on it Tuesday.
All right. Any other unfinished business? We begin the new business. Monthly financial report, anybody have any questions on the monthly financial report? Are you none, that'll be available for approval on Tuesday. Accounts payable, everybody, anybody have any questions on the accounts payable? I hear nothing. Next, I mentioned the, at the beginning of the, of the meeting that we are going to be sending two letters to the county. One to the planning and zoning board, and one to the county commissioners, expressing our concerns about the reclassification of the property out on Croustville Road from agricultural to handy industrial. Copy of those letters in your packet, anybody have any comments or questions on any of those?
I think everybody's had their whack at it. So if they don't hear anything, then we'll, we'll execute it. And just, you know, the planning and zoning wanted to send their own letter as well, but we decided that it's.
Yeah.
It's joint between everybody.
Joint, yeah. They, so it's coming from both, both of our planning and the mayor and council as well.
You saw some letters from our cable television committee person. Anybody have any questions or comments on those? I happened to run into a church and suggested that it would be nice to get a report once in a while. And she said she would, so there we go. If you have any questions on the, it looks like the fees are going up.
Yep.
What are they trying to do, just raise fees because they're encrypting?
I'm sorry?
What are they doing? Raising fees because they're encrypting their signal, no?
Certainly.
Are they going to catch all these people who have been pirating their signal?
I guess.
Because they're not going to work anymore.
Their intentions are.
How does it impact the city?
I got some kind of cryptic message on my phone last night about having to switch my modem out, which I don't quite understand, but.
Well, I've gotten that as well. And I don't, you know, I.
Is it from your service provider?
Yes.
From Comcast?
Right. They, somehow they lost, they lost the signal, and you get that message. And, you know, I've had that several times in the past, you know, month or two. And I don't know if it's because they're working on something at the time, doing a switch out of something. But it, sometimes it's out for hours, and sometimes it's only like 10 minutes.
I've, I've never experienced any, I just, I don't know what that will mine for.
But I, you know, I've had the exact same thing happen to me.
My question is, this letter from Comcast, how does it impact the city? What does it do to city cost?
Well, we, there's a share that we give to the pay.
Yeah, besides that.
Other than that, and it's just, we as a provider, or not a provider, we as users in the municipality pay more.
The users do?
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Not affecting us.
They don't think that we're going to be the ones to advertise this?
Well, it, it's important that, that we, we actively participate in this committee. It's because it, again, there's, there's revenue received because of the use of our right-of-way, the power lines. I know that Comcast is negotiating a new contract, or is in the process of negotiating a contract. So it behooves us to be up to date on what those negotiations are about. So that's why I encouraged our committee member to provide some input.
Many, many years ago, when this first came, the original, in my opinion, now, this is strictly my opinion, there was a mistake that was made, in that the county does not own the infrastructure. The wires that are hanging up there, they don't own it. Had they negotiated to, to own those, those things, you could plug and play and get your best, you know, the Comcast, you know, then you're negotiating with them. We can't, we don't have any negoti, we have no negotiation. We just take what they give us. Because if you had, if we had owned, the county had owned the infrastructure, then, you know, it's like, okay.
Plug anybody into it.
Yeah, so it's like, let's take bids, folks. But now it's like sole source. You can't do anything about it.
Okay.
I think we've covered number five.
I think so.
Already done number five. Employee handbook, talked about that. Let's, um, begin with council member reports, Joe, do you have any?
Nothing this week.
Nope.
I think I'll save mine till Tuesday.
Angelo, I just wanted to make a, a comment that on Monday, I'll be issuing a proclamation on our behalf for Red Ribbon Week, which is October the 23rd through the 31st. And it is sponsored by the Young Marines, I believe, is the group that is behind this, that calls attention to our, our men in service and women in service, and dedicates a week for that behalf. I'll have a proclamation prepared that I'll, that I'll read. Rick's, Rick's grandson is involved in a turn from a trip out west to see the.
He had an article put in the newsletter, I don't know if you saw it or not.
Yeah, so that was pretty exciting. Code walkers or talkers or something?
Code talkers.
Code talkers. We attended the MML chapter meeting a week or two ago, which I thought was pretty productive in New Windsor. Just to mention that the next meeting is our annual legislative conference, or dinner. And I encourage everybody to try to make time to, to come to that event and let our legislators know, or new legislators know, what's on our mind. Also this year, the chapter is trying to get new blood in the chair and the various chapter positions. If anybody has any interest in an exciting adventure of.
Tell you how long ago that was, I was the last president.
You can be president, or vice president, or secretary, or treasurer, or district.
District vice president, yeah, that's, he's had that, well, wait a minute now, wait for it. I was the previous district vice president too. So it's.
I've done them all too, so somebody else's turn.
No, what I'm saying is, is that I was previous on both of those positions, that's just.
It really, it really is kind of, it's, it's, it's not hard, and it's enjoyable, so, my opinion. But I like that kind of thing. And of course, on the 18th, we have our Fall Fest, pet parade, and barnyard bingo. All rolled into.
Have I got your tickets?
Yep, yes.
Thank you for your contribution.
Hopefully everybody's down at the park on that, on the 18th of September, or October, oops, we already missed that one. And, and bring your pets and your barn clothes.
A little aside on that, we had a, we had a meeting the other day, and, and I was, I'm one of the judges that I was last year for the pet. And there's a new judge, and she was a little concerned with the, you know, because there's, we had alpacas last year, we had all kinds of animals, right? And part, one of the contests in there says, you know, who's the best kisser? And she says, well, what if somebody brings a snake? Or something like that. I said, not to worry. I said, the owner has to kiss the animal. Because I'm not about to. Mayor, one other thing in case you've forgotten. Jim? The award.
The award, the plaque.
Oh, yeah, the plaque.
The plaque.
Oh, 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 oh.
Hello?
You're looking at it. At the chapter meeting, we received a plaque of the Maryland Energy Administration that, that kind of recognizes us for our energy conservation efforts, which go back to a number of things, including reducing the engine size on our police fleet, all the way to HVAC changes. And we're one of a handful of communities and towns that have earned state.
And it's amazing, and I'm not, and I don't want to let too many other people know, because we've been taking the money. We got all new HVAC systems throughout the city.
That is a fine sign, if I might say so. I, I thought maybe we could mount it on the front of the city hall. After you soak in the pleasure of looking at it for the next month or two, we'll think and put it.
Well, put it, you know, you picked a place out, right?
I've got a good place.
We'll get it up.
Already got the anchors on the wall.
Oh.
Anyway, that was something that we received, that was, that was kind of neat. It was funny, down at the MML conference, the week before our MML chapter meeting, they had this, they had a booth set up from the Maryland Energy Administration. They had eight maybe signs that were displayed in the booth of all the towns and municipalities that won these awards. And I saw the Tontytown sign, I said, well, gee, I need to take that home with me. And now they made some kind of excuse that they weren't going to, that they'll make sure I got one and all this kind of stuff. They wouldn't let me have that one. And then here you got the chapter meeting, they presented it to us.
They're out advertising it, Henry.
Three of us got our, our pictures.
Where's your money source?
I know.
All right. Anything else in the council? All right, anything from the community, anybody like to say? And if you identify who you are for the record and where you live.
City one? Yes, I'm Sue Neffley, I live at 103 Keenan Street in Tontytown. Okay. I appreciate the opportunity to ask questions, and I try to learn how local government works. I, I worked for the federal government for 37 years. And one of the things that we did, I worked in the Medicaid program, and we had, well, we sent directives and, and regulations and things for states. And we had a technical advisory group, we called it a tag. And it was input from the states, you know, we would try to gather input before we would go out with a directive. So I guess I'm really curious about the letter to the commission and the planning, the planning zoning commission, yeah, the planning commission?
That will be, that will be released on Monday.
Okay. A couple of things, I'm just wondering.
Tuesday. I'm sorry.
Tuesday, this couple of days. Yeah, I'm curious about like input from, from the public in, see, we don't, I guess we don't know what you're thinking, you don't know what we're thinking. And I've had to try to just learn about this issue. I, I know I ask at the, you know, the senior center, because I was just, like, could somebody kind of explain this issue? And what, you know, what's going on, since I've been trying to gather information. And I've heard some really, really great concerns, you know, issues, concerns that people would have, questions. Like, I've got lots of questions about.
Were you at the meeting?
Pardon?
Were you at the meeting?
Yes, I was, I was. And I was just, Carl, I was scrambling to try to figure out what everybody was talking about. It was, it was difficult.
Maybe I can just give you a real quick synopsis of what, what we're, we're all in this together. And each seven years, and it's been 10 years on the county's part.
Right.
State law requires that we come up with a comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan is a plan for what we would like our city, or in the case of the county, what they would like the county to look like for the next seven years. And it's the charge of the planning. And it's the charge of the Planning and Zoning Commission, whether it's the city's Planning and Zoning Commission, or the county's Planning and Zoning Commission, to develop this plan by meeting together, discussing it, and receiving citizen input. the meeting you were attended the other night was the county's attempt to receive citizen input on their master plan, on their comprehensive plan, same, it's an interchangeable term, master plan or comprehensive plan. So, the, the folks that were at the meeting at the senior center the other night, and they had five of these, I think, throughout the whole county, where they were, where they received comments from folks in different areas on their comprehensive plan. It's up for, it's up to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the county to develop this plan, after they receive all this input. And then, they present it to the county council. The county council then can vote on it, either to accept it or reject it. They can't, or they shouldn't offer any other stuff. In other words, it's, they can take it as they, as it's been presented to them, or they can say, no, we don't like it, and reject it, so they go back and start over again. And that's basically the way the system works. The property that, that is in question here is in, in the county, and it's in the county jurisdiction. So, there's nothing that we can do legally under Article sixty-six B, which gives us our authority to act as a municipality, and the county's authority to act as a county, and empowers local government, that sixty-six B does. There's nothing we can do that, other than voice our opinion on what we think of the, of the, of the comprehensive plan. So, we were in attendance at that meeting, and voiced our opinion, and we're following it up by aletto, voicing our opinion. And our positions come from two concerns. First of all, again, Article sixty-six B requires the county and the city to get together and talk about things like this when they, when they impinge on one another, when it gets close to our borders, they're supposed to discuss this with us. They didn't do that, we had a problem with that, that's gonna be in our letter. The other thing is, that the facility being zoned from agriculture to heavy industry is also a concern for us, because the infrastructure, or the roadways that will connect this plant to whoever uses it, come right through Tawnytown. So, we have an issue with, with extra traffic and heavy traffic coming through our main square. And also, it's a concern that perhaps they'll be using Antrim Boulevard, or perhaps they'll be using some secondary county roads, which are inadequate, such as Fieser Road, or, or Stone Cypher Road, or, or some of those other roads feeding into that Crousmill facility. So, that's basically what's in our letter. We, we're expressing our displeasure with that. As far as being able to say, we don't want this in, in Tawnytown, or in our area, we don't have any say in that, that's up to the county to decide. We express what our concerns are, and how we think it's gonna impact our community. And we, and we, and we're also concerned that they didn't talk to us about it before. Those are the issues that we have with the project. Now, the citizens in general probably have similar interests, or, or ideas. I'm sure they're concerned with the extra traffic, I'm sure they're concerned with a lot of extra trucks riding up and down these back roads. And that's the kind of thing that you, you need to make clear to the county commissioners and to the planning and zoning board. And again, the attempt to do that was, was, or a attempt to do that was, was over at the senior center a few weeks ago. There's an additional meeting, I understand, on November the fifth, where they will continue to receive comments on the comprehensive plan that the public is invited to. So, I encourage you to, to get your thoughts together, and go down there and make your thoughts known. Again, it's up to the, the, it's up to the commissioners to make a decision on what to do. It's, it's interesting to note that November the fifth is the day after election day, just FYI. But that may be good.
The process was, they went to five, went to all five districts. And that was supposed to be an information night. What they, what they wanted to do was tell everybody at that, well, the cat get out of the bag.
Right.
You know? And so, that turned into a little bit more than just sitting back and listening to them. There was a lot of questions by a lot of you that were here. Now, they took, they, they had cards there, that if you had concerns, you could write those, write on those cards, okay? That goes directly back to the plan, to the, the planning and zoning. Now, the fifth is the public hearing. What you should have, if you're planning to do anything about that, is you, you have two choices. One, to show up, or express your concerns in writing. We're expressing our concerns in writing.
Okay. Yeah, was it certain? This letter, will it be public information for us to see, the letter that you sent?
Tuesday.
To the, to the commission?
Tuesday.
Can we have copies of that available here?
No.
Tuesday.
Tuesday we will, yes.
That's what I mean, Tuesday.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Yeah, I didn't know whether, you know, the letter, like, sometimes you gather input from, you know, the community, and would send a letter saying, well, the citizens of Tawnytown have the following issues, or concerns, or something like that. But you're saying we just, we need to do it on our own? Okay.
Yeah, we're not a clearinghouse on that.
Right, okay.
We're, we're on your side, we're thinking-
Yeah, okay.
Basically-
It's helpful. And I can realize, you know, in the federal government, we had a lot of, you know, people to be able to pull that together. And I can see where it would be more of a, you could be a clearinghouse, I could see that being issued.
On this, but it, it's just a, right now, I mean, it's just a mutual-
Yeah.
You know, agreement society, there's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah.
Unless we individually express our concerns with the county.
Well, it helped for, it helped us for you to clarify tonight, because we were like, are we on the same side or not, you know, so?
But the more people that do express-
Right.
The, the better we all would be, I think.
See, we're-
I agree.
We are treated no more, no less in this process than you as an individual in the city.
Yeah. I mean, we want, we wanna have a mutual understanding, and, and as you know, when we went to the senior center, there was a, you know, a little, it was a little friction at the beginning, because people wanted to know, it's like, well, no, that's what, not what this meeting's for. So, we, we come here tonight, and it's like, oh, no, we thought, based on that meeting, we were supposed to show up here tonight, we could sort of flesh it all out. And so, we came, and it's like, oh, no, like, and, and so, you know, we wanna have a real good mutual understanding, and be able to freely speak, and, and so I appreciate that, that you, you know, made that available.
That night, there was an individual there that basically said, let's come to this meeting for more information. And I went to the individual and asked them, what is the agenda? Because I gotta put the agenda together, what is, you know, and they said, questions. I said, about, I said, we can't answer those questions, the questions are here, these people here will do that. So, that kind of got out into the public, that we were gonna, everybody's gonna meet here for information. We have no more information than you have, what we got from that night.
And a suggestion, when you look at how you're gonna respond, okay? Don't look at any one application for that property. Look at the definition of heavy industrial use.
Right.
There are some things on there that are worse than anything you can possibly think of in a heavy industrial area. So, just don't concentrate on what people have been saying.
Right, that's a good point. Okay.
The gasification plant is only on the talking stages, but if it's rezoned heavy industry, it's gonna be heavy industry forever. So, just let your magic run away with you. I mean, that might be a mild use for it if it, if it turned into a gasification plant, compared to some other stuff that could-
Yeah, it's a good point.
So, that, that's, that's the bigger issue.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
Yeah, you said that they had an agreement with the municipalities, that they would meet with each municipality before they made any decisions. You put it up.
Yes.
An agreement you had, was that a verbal agreement, or is that a-
It's a written agreement.
It's a written agreement.
It's a very formal, and it's called the Town-County Agreement, I think you, you probably remember that.
Part of sixty-six B, which is our-
No, it's the Town-County Agreement.
They broke an agreement then, the county.
Well, I, yeah, I'd, that's, yeah, I'd say that it's, that's what we're going to be addressing as well.
All right, anything else? Is there a motion to a turn?
Is that moved?
Second.
Second.
If they ever say aye, sign, we'll carry it. We did real well, council, it's only ten minutes after nine, I figured-